First item on the agenda is Strong Mayor Duties and Responsibilities. Commissioner Nearing, I know this was put on at your request, so if you want to introduce this item, we'll go to the staff report.
Okay, thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. Happy Monday. So, I think the best way to kind of proceed on this is to do a level set in why I had brought this to the administration's attention. Let me preface first by saying that the intention here is really about being as efficient and responsive to our residents and our businesses here in the city of West Palm Beach, no more nor less. That is what my intention is and the reason why I brought this to the administration. So, about a month ago, we received an email from you, Mayor, regarding, well, actually, it was Halloween, regarding communication with staff. And very quickly, it says, it has come to my attention that the commissioners are submitting requests, instructions, or questions. And that's the important word here, questions directly to staff. And you go on to say, well, you know, fully appreciate the desire to resolve issues and address concerns. You discuss the city's charter. You also request that commissioners directly send emails to Tiffany David, who is the commission liaison, and a copy to Ms. Johnson, the interim city administrator. And so, I read the email, and while I agree with requests and instructions per our charter, the word that confused me in the email was questions, because that is primarily how I have used my communication with city staff, especially assistant city administrators, has been questions, not directives, not instructions, but questions. So, in the email, it refers to Tiffany David, who is, again, the commission liaison and also the neighborhood first liaison. So, once again, very clear that under the charter, the mayor, he or she can designate any staff to have communications with the city commissioners. I understand that, not questioning that at all. My request to administration was to reconsider the approach as outlined in the email and permit commissioners to directly communicate with assistant city administrators regarding questions only, not directives, not instructions, questions only. And I made this request for several reasons that I just very quickly want to outline. First of all, today, we have five city assistant administrators. This time last year, I believe we had two city assistant city administrators. So now, we have five assistant city administrators, and I was a part of approving that. So, no judgment there, it's just the reality. The other point is, we have a position who is, the title is Neighborhood's First Liaison and Commission Liaison. And it is a position that I, as a commissioner, had no influence, no suggestions around either the job description or the person who would fill that position. And so, again, no judgment there, it's just the reality of it. I also took some time to research through the commission office, and thank you, staff, the strong mayor government around the state of Florida, and just to kind of get a better idea of how the commissioners interact with staff. And what I thought was the case, but it was interesting to see that it is very factual, is that most strong mayor governments in the state of Florida, with comparable numbers in terms of our city residents, have legislative aides. And again, that was interesting, because we don't here in the city of West Palm Beach, and I'm not making a recommendation that we adopt that, but it was just interesting that those legislative aides are the conduit in terms of getting information back out to the constituents per the commission. And finally, it's the charter itself, and I appreciate administration for providing the backup. If we look at the charter directly in section 2.04, and I'm just going to start halfway down, because this is the most important piece to me, "Except for the purpose of inquiry." And inquiry is the act of asking for information. So, it says very clearly in the charter, "Except for the purpose of inquiry, the city commissioners collectively and individually shall deal with administrative matters solely through the mayor or the mayor's designee, and shall not collectively or individually give orders to any subordinate of the mayor, either publicly or privately." And so, again, my request was really around inquiry. It was really around asking questions. And again, and I'll finish on this point, I really appreciate the backup, it was very helpful, and I had gotten copies as well. We've had, since 1991, the strong mayor form of government, and in every administration at one point in time, and I can appreciate this, a mayor has had to send out a memorandum concerning this very issue. So, if you go back to Honorable Graham, she sent out in April of 1993 around communicating with directors, and in her email or message, it states very clearly, "Direct request." Also, Honorable Daze, in June of 2000, it says, "Demands being placed on city staff by commissioners." Fast forward to Honorable Mujo, "Shall give orders." And the latest communication, " Submitting requests, instructions, or questions directly." My holdup is around the questions and the efficiency in which, as a commissioner, to get information back out to the constituents. So, I had asked that this be brought up, and had a conversation with the city attorney on this as well, to review the charter, and I guess we have some information regarding that. But that's my request, I want to just be very clear about that. It is around elected officials, five of them, being able to ask questions of assistant city attorneys, five of them, administrators, sorry, thank you, five of them, questions, not directives, not orders, not instructions. And then I'll say this last thing, some may say, "Well, that gets confusing. It confuses staff, because it's hard to tell if it's a question or a directive." And here's what I'll say to that, and I empathize with it. But I did not get into banking, because I don't like numbers. There is no way that I think any staff, especially at that level, comes to City Hall and doesn't have an expectation that they will have to deal with the pressures both from an administration and commissioners. And again, I'm not here to confuse that, but questions, questions, that's where I'm held up on this, and that's where I'm seeking assistance, and would love to hear from my fellow commissioners on this issue as well. Thank you.
All right, before we get into commissioners' reactions, let's hear from the city attorney as to the information. I believe a lot of information was provided as backup, and if you wanted to expound upon that, then we'll get into a discussion.
Mayor, I have a very brief...
And just commissioners, Kimberly Rothenberg, the city attorney's not here, she has a family medical emergency, so she's unable to be here this morning. So, I'm filling in for her. Mayor, I have a short PowerPoint that sort of goes to the strong mayor and answers this question, if you would like me to do that.
Please.
As Commissioner Nearing, this is just really a brief background, as Commissioner Nearing mentioned, there was a charter referendum by the citizens to basically give a new balance of power to the government in terms of the city commission, the strong mayor form of government. So, the city commission, the governing body of the city, they have the legislative functions, approve the budget. The charter, section 301, sets out the executive responsibilities of the mayor, as the chief executive officer and administrative head, directs the administration of all departments and agencies, appoints and removes the mayor's staff, including the city administrator, appoints and removes the department directors, except the police chief, fire chief, and city attorney must be ratified by the city commission, appoints and removes members of the boards and committees, prepares the annual budget, prepares the agenda for the commission, timely provides information as the city commission may collectively or individually require concerning the operation of city departments, initiates investigations, and has the veto power. The charter in 204, as Commissioner Nearing also pointed out, is specific as to commission staff interaction. So, the commissioners must address administrative matters solely through the mayor or the mayor's designee. They shall not give orders to city staff, they may directly seek legal advice from the city attorney, and may reasonably, and this is where I think the, where the charter says, "Except for inquiry," this is how inquiries get addressed by the city commission. City commission may reasonably summon a department director to appear at a city commission meeting to provide information and/or answer questions. So, that's the ability of the commission to receive answers. Other than going through the mayor's designee, they can ask a department director to provide information or answer questions. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll weigh in just a bit, and then we'll open up for discussion. There seems to be a lot of emphasis placed on the word "question." A question is nothing other than a request for information. So, in my view, it still should go through my office or my designee. Now, if there is a concern about having to go through Tiffany, the commission liaison, we could tinker with that, and we could go back to, and I'll suggest that we'll go back to the approach that was taken by every other strong mayor preceding me, where all the information requests would go, be funneled through the city administrator. I'm fine with that. And so, I don't know if that was the issue of having to deal with some of them below the city administrator level, we can keep it as every other mayor has done prior to me, every other strong mayor, where you just run all of this through the city administrator, and he or she will find the appropriate staff person to deal with it. But a question is nothing more than a request for information, so I don't treat them differently. But anyway, Commissioner Perdue.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question for the assistant city attorney. Does the, and I haven't read the whole city charter, I probably should have before coming here today, but does this charter anywhere define what the word "inquiry" means in this context? Does inquiry mean something that's formally, collectively, as a commission? Or is, could inquiry also be defined as individually as commissioners? Is there a definition section that defines inquiry?
The charter does not have a definition section, but in this one, section 2.04, that talks about city commission and staff interaction, is where it talks about their, the commissioners collectively or individually must deal with administrative matters solely through the mayor or the mayor's designee. And it is also the place where it says, where the commission wants an answer or to provide information, is they can summon a director to a commission meeting.
Mayor, may I follow up?
Yes.
I think that the sticking point here is, "Except for the purpose of an inquiry." So, I guess we got, we have to determine what an inquiry actually is. Is it being used in the formal context of us collectively as a governing body versus us individually as commissioners? And it sounds like we don't have a definition for that, so, within the charter.
Well, two sentences later, it talks about, if you want an answer from a department director, you can have them come to a commission meeting. And it says, individually or collectively, you put your questions through the mayor or the mayor's designee. So, I mean, that was a section in the charter that was meant to address the interaction between the commission and city staff. So, I mean, I think inquiry is being used in its regular term of just a question or, you know, a need for information.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by saying, I respect and understand the strong mayor form of government and the need for the mayor to be in charge of his staff. When we look at what we have before us, this was established in 1991, so just to put that in context, in 1991, there were no emails, no social media, no internet, very limited cell phone interaction, and these are all things that we deal with today. So, our constituents are looking for immediate answers, in the same way they're giving us immediate information. I think part of, some of my concern here is, I, like my fellow commissioners here, were part of approving about a million and a half dollars' worth of staff, which included five assistant city administrators. And I did so with assurances from administrative staff at the time that it would create better efficiencies, that I would have direct access to ask questions to those assistant city administrators. I know there is some concern around the word "inquiry." According to the charter, the charter says, "We are permitted to make inquiries," and I think, you know, my request is to continue that communication with assistant city administrators, all of which are six-figure-paying salary jobs, high-level executives, not to go ask questions of the code enforcement officer or someone who may take my request in a different way, where we had previously been directed by previous city manager, which I understand now from mayor's directive was not the way mayor had wanted staff to go, but the previous direction was to reach out directly to only senior-level staff, assistant city administrators, with a copy to the city manager, and in my view, for pure purposes of efficiency. Understanding that previous mayors have all given this directive, previous mayors have not had the kind of support staff that I believe current administration has, and again, being a party to creating that system, I was happy to do so, knowing that I would have better access to those employees. So, I guess it's a little disheartening at this point, and understanding there was miscommunications, perhaps, but I feel like making that vote at that time, now I have a change in scenario that makes, what would have, my decision would have been different had I had information like this. And so, again, my request is to make sure that we are communicating most efficiently and still maintain that system where the city manager is completely in control of where that communication is flowing and completely aware of the questions only. I think in the interest of what we're talking about, efficiency, the kinds of requests and the volume of requests we get from our citizens, to bring every single one of those to a public meeting to ask questions is not the most efficient way for us to address those. You know, I leave it to administration and my fellow commissioners to also weigh in, but if we could find a way to make, under the charter, the mayor's designee, to just expand that definition of designee for inquiry only, I think it would help me, as a commissioner, to do my job.
Well, just to address that point, if the city administrator is the designee, I'm not sure how that is inefficient. He or she knows which staff person, and may even be below the assistant city administrator position, to get their information more quickly. It gets funneled through a single source, and so, if the designee is a city administrator, who is the chief administrative officer for the city, I don't know how it could get more efficient than that. I've not heard of any concerns, complaints, bottlenecks at the city administrator level. If you have a question, and again, this is exactly as every other strong mayor has done it preceding me, whether it's through telephone, fax, or snail mail, we now have a quicker way of responding. You get a request from a citizen, simply forward that to the city administrator, and we will jump right on it. Actually, the desire to have it go through Ms. David as a commission liaison is to add even more efficiency, but if there's resistance to that, that's fine. Just shoot everything to the city administrator, I think, and Ms. Johnson, we have somebody who's very capable of getting it to the appropriate person in a timely fashion, so that you can respond as efficiently and quickly as possible to your constituents or residents. Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. I respectfully disagree. I do believe that in, you know, the last 18 months that I've been a commissioner with previous administration, I know that Ms. Johnson has been implementing, I feel like, a little bit more efficiencies, but I had a number of requests that I would send through, you know, the one designee that I was allowed to speak with, and that oftentimes, I would have to have multiple follow-up to be able to get the answers. And so, along with my commissioners approving the additional assistant city administrators, we were, and I can speak for myself, I was specifically told that I would be able to meet regularly with each of those city assistant city administrators. And quite frankly, I remember telling my husband just how much more efficient it was, and how I felt like I was getting more answers, I was able to respond to residents more quickly. We get multiple emails, multiple text messages, requests via Nextdoor app, on social media, constantly getting asked for answers, and, you know, for that, I don't know how long it was, maybe about six to eight months, I really felt like we were getting answers back to them rather quickly, and felt like it was a really good system. In the last few months, it being reverted back to funneling through one or two individuals, I have noticed a lag time in response, and some responses even not being, or some questions not being answered, so much so that I was at a neighborhood meeting, was asked a question, and other folks who were able to email staff had an answer that I didn't have, that I had actually asked and never received a response to. So, my goal is 100% about efficiency, getting accurate information, maybe, to use Commissioner Nearing's word, having a level set with the whole community of what information is it that the commissioners will have, because I think there is some level of expectation of the type of information that we'll provide to our constituents. I think also very important to me is having a timely process for closing the loop. So, when a question is asked, I, you know, I certainly understand that sometimes the process takes a long time to figure it out, we're working on possible solutions, and that may take weeks or sometimes months, but when there is no answer given back to us to say, "Hey, I'm working on this, we're working with staff on a solution," that leaves us in a really bad situation with the residents as well. And then, finally, what I wanted to say in these comments here was, I think, most recently, some of the frustration that I have felt, that I've heard some of my fellow commissioners mention, is just when the media has information before we do, or information that we don't, that makes it very difficult for us to do our job and, you know, making sure that we're putting the city first in making our decisions.
Commissioner Nearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Attorney, do you know the last time the charter was visited or updated?
2012.
I don't know the exact date.
2012.
Okay, so...
Okay, well, I actually knew the answer to that, and I wanted to ask you. And would you consider, Madam Attorney, that the charter's a living document in that, would you consider it a living document?
Well, it goes through regular charter reviews every decade or so, so at that point in time, the citizens get to weigh in, and yes, it becomes a living document when the citizens change it.
And you mentioned, Mayor, if I can, you mentioned every decade, is that best practices in terms of just as an ongoing, and that I don't know the answer to, in terms of how often a charter should be looked at? Are you saying 10 years?
It's usually around that period of time, 10 to 15 years, that's as best practices, and the average for what most municipalities do.
Okay. And the last thing I have is, I had asked Attorney Rothenberg, and hopefully, all is well with her and her family today, to be prepared today, if she could, to talk about what that looks like in terms of the charter. Because again, I think, as stated on this day, and I can only speak for myself in this, this is not a, I am not here to usurp the strong mayor form of government. That's what we have in the city, and as a full-time resident, and a resident that will retire here, I am for it, and I'm supportive of it. But I'm more supportive of being efficient, I'm more supportive of, just because we've done things one way, doesn't mean that if it's not efficient, or if it doesn't make sense, that we shouldn't look at how it is that we changed that. And again, I think the variable for me in this is that we have very professional, bright, very, you know, staff who know this work, who understand history of these projects, who can answer a question that I need to get back to the TPA, as my colleagues and I are on that board. There are oftentimes where we have less than an hour to try and sound halfway smart in a public meeting on an issue that is critically important to our residents and our city, and so, that was the genesis behind me bringing this up. It is not to in any way all of a sudden change our form of government, it is really about, I mean, I really want you to hear the spirit in which I am bringing this. And it is not to put more on the plate of our city employees or staff, but I do go back to, you know, it is why I'm not a banker. I don't like numbers, and in city government, this is par for the course, and I just will always believe that. So, you know, obviously, Mayor, it's up to you and your administration in terms of, I guess, the next steps and how we proceed, but I wanted to, like I said, bring this and kind of do a level set and hear what my fellow commissioners thought about it.
Well, the counter to kind of the open dialogue policy, and this was expressed in each of the memos, that was before, is staff gets confusing signals. What prompted me to send the email that I sent is that I was hearing from senior staff that, you know, they were being bombarded with information requests and what they interpreted as orders from the commissioners. And that's what prompted me to take the action that I did, because it affects their ability to be efficient in the job that they do. Now, some have said, "Well, you know, that's what they paid for." No, they didn't pay for having competing agendas and getting competing requests so that they can not do their job most efficiently, which benefits the citizens. So, again, this was an issue that has been debated at this level between commissioners and the strong mayor since the inception of the strong mayor form of government. And now, commissioners, what I can ask you is if you feel that you are not getting responded to an efficient matter, feel free to bring it to my attention, so that, listen, I was a commissioner for eight years, I understand what comes with that job, and I want you to be as effective as possible. And if you feel that there are backlogs or delays, please bring it directly to me, and I will get to the bottom of it. But what I'm not willing to do is to dilute the power of the strong mayor in such a way that now staff is confused about where their directions are. that now staff is confused about where their directions are coming from. And so, no, I'm not going to, and I don't know what promises were made to you at the time you were being asked to vote on a budget item, I wasn't privy to those discussions. And so I don't know if that, you know, apparently you were told that we would do this in order to help you get your questions answered more efficiently. All I can tell you is that I understand your desire for efficiency and the need of information, but I have to counterbalance that, I have to balance that against the staff and their needs to understand what the priorities are and not to get bombarded with requests and information from several sources so that they are not able to do their job most efficiently. So I believe that this tactic, funneling everything through the city administrator, will be the best way to balance those competing interests, and I urge you to contact me directly if you feel that this isn't working for you, and we will, you know, take another look at it. But I'm not trying to hamper your ability to do your job, but be responsive to your constituents. Your constituents are my constituents, and I certainly want the city to be perceived as efficient and effective as possible. But on the other hand, I can't have staff torn in many different directions, and that's the balance that we'll take.
Mayor.
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. And, you know, I think we all want efficiency, and what's interesting is taxing even our assistant city administrators with constant meetings probably isn't the most efficient way either, although it feels a little bit more responsive than having to be funneled through all one individual. I used to have weekly meetings with our previous city administrator, and I can tell you that 99% of the time that I had those meetings, we were, I was constantly bringing up that we need a better system for transparency of information and requests and a system, some kind of ticketing system, more thorough information on our website. And quite frankly, I think probably 60 to 75% of the requests that I receive could be answered if we had some of those systems in place. And I know that we have talked about better use of technology in our strategic plan and better communication, but, you know, I think that if we knew that that plan, or at least I speak for myself, if I knew that that plan was in process and I was assured that there was a plan in process with previous administration, I have not heard that brought up yet, but I have started to work on scheduling my weekly meetings with our new interim assistant administrator. But I think that that is something that would help us with efficiencies as well. Not only would we be able to look up the information, but our constituents would as well. So then that would leave the more complex questions that maybe would become less frequent or we would have less frequent requests for all of these just questions about AIPP, questions about where are we on the status of a project, the questions that I get daily.
Let me address that, and that's fair. I mean, that's exactly why I brought a commission liaison slash neighborhood first representative on as part of my staff. We are, and one of her charges was to come up with a technological infrastructure that would allow for more efficient responses to citizens even outside of going to you. We were looking at the 822 system, that is antiquated, and she's looking at that and looking at alternatives. We are in the midst of revamping our website and making that a more efficient vehicle for getting information out to the public. So we are working on those, and that's not really the topic of consideration at this time, but I recognize that there are some log jams vis-à-vis citizen interaction with the city. Frankly, citizens shouldn't always have to go through the commissioners to get answers to questions. Yes, we should have an infrastructure, technological infrastructure in place, whether it's a website, whether it's an 822 system, or even an app. I was at a conference just last week where I saw a great app, and I'm going to talk to staff about it and see if we can look at that. Yeah, it's a new day, technology is our friend. So we're looking at all of those as we move forward. But the matter for today, that at least the topic for today, is whether there will be a system where commissioners can interact with assistant city administrators, and I'm not willing to go that far yet. Yes, Commissioner Boudouzey.
Thank you, Mayor. And respectfully, I too remember being told that this number of assistant city administrators would facilitate better communication with the commissioners and that they would potentially be in a position to be more responsive to our requests. You know, we've got five assistant city administrators, we've got a police chief and a fire chief, all high-level, seven high-level executives who report either directly to the administrator or to the mayor. I'm not sure if those staff members are currently being bombarded with questions, that funneling them through a single source is going to make that problem any better or alleviate, you know, the workload. I too concur with the sentiments today of my fellow commissioners. We're really, we're not looking to challenge your authority, Mayor, we're simply just making sure that we can be responsive to our constituents.
And as I said, if this isn't working out, please let me know, but let's implement it. And, you know, the number keeps going out, about five assistant city administrators, actually down to four, and I'm looking to prune that even further, so, and I'm not even sure how that relates, but I wasn't privy to the conversations or the promises and that were made to you to urge you to vote in that direction. I appreciate the vote, but again, I've got to balance the competing concerns of the staff and their ability to get their job done efficiently, and the concern of the commissioners to get information efficiently and effectively, and we will try it as has been tried before with every other strong mayor. We'll continue to funnel things through, and I will have Tiffany to continue to work on technological advances so that the public can have an avenue for communicating directly with the city and hopefully alleviate that. But be that as it may, we'll continue to work through the city administrator. And Ms. Johnson, I would ask that you prioritize any communication you get from commissioners, get it to the appropriate person ASAP, and let the commissioners know where it is and when they can expect an answer to whatever their inquiry question request might be. And we'll take, we'll continue to tweak it, to take another look at it. And if commissioners are not working for you, let me know directly, and we'll try to get there. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. My last comment. Madam Attorney, could you get to me or the commissioners just the process and what it would look like to review this portion of the charter, not the entire charter, but just this specific portion? I had made that request of Attorney Rothenberg, so I'd imagine that maybe she was prepared to present that today and just didn't have it, but I'd like to see that in terms of the process. Thank you.
Don't you have to, I believe you have to appoint a charter review commission, and once you open it up, everything in the charter is subject to review, am I correct?
I believe so.
Yeah, so it's not like you could just narrow the inquiry to a particular section, and it is done by the appointment of a charter, citizens charter review committee, and as I said, everything in the charter is subject to review. So I don't think there's a way to just narrow their review to a certain section. Commissioner Shove.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've heard you say several times, if it's not working for you, let me know. And I've heard four of five commissioners, I won't speak for you, Commissioner Riles, that are telling you that this isn't working, and so.
But we just implemented, I just sent out the indication that everything should go through the city administrator. You were saying under the prior city administrator, you were able to contact assistant city administrators, all right? So when did I send this, October 31st? This is November, so you're saying in less than a month, you know this isn't working?
So what I'm saying is, we've worked, a number of commissioners on this dais have worked under both systems, under a different number of administrators, and, you know, indicating that you too have also, as a commissioner, worked under the system, and it's become restrictive. That being said, our city charter is our guiding document, and according to the letter of the law of what the city charter says, except for purpose of an inquiry, that says to me that according to this document, I as a commissioner or anybody else can still send an inquiry to any member of staff. And I think today's conversation was to try to find some middle ground for that, and I mean, Mayor, at your discretion, obviously acknowledging you can tell your staff not to acknowledge back to an inquiry. Obviously not the place where I think progress happens, but I think when we're looking at what exactly the charter says, if we're looking to change the charter somewhere down the line or at least have that inquiry, the charter today as it exists says, except for the purpose of an inquiry, which means I can make an inquiry to anybody, I just can't have conversations with directives, et cetera, to any other party. So, you know, I think as we look there, the city charter as it exists already gives commissioners that authority to send the question. Again, mayor's in charge of city staff and can direct city staff in any way, but perhaps that's a middle ground to say, I have resident inquiries, and just being able to connect that conduit to say, dear resident, copy in, city administrator, this is the person you need to talk to. I think even just that step is helpful for us to get constituent questions answered. So even if we take that interim step without, that way there's no directive, there's no telling staff which way we as a commission would like them to go.
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. When your commission liaison, Ms. Davis, first came on, I was doing that very similar process. I actually even had like a template of how I could make the introduction of her to residents. And at the, and I'm sharing all of this because you said you'd like feedback on this. For the first month or so, it was very responsive, got good answers and had a good system. As I imagine, as months went by, the requests started stacking up and more information started being requested and responses started to be delayed or not happen altogether. And so I think that, you know, I think we do have an issue here, and whether it is, I was appreciative of the commission liaison position, although I've never seen a job description or an outline of, these are the things that she can handle, these are, you know, I just, I think we need some guidance on who we're communicating with for what and how, and what's the best way to get the answers to, and if a resident asks for this type of question, this is where they can easily find it. I just, I feel like we're walking here without a map, and we're looking for some help to be able to get answers quickly to our residents.
Okay, and I appreciate that. So the map is to go through the city administrator, and I will continue to work with Tiffany behind the scenes so we could come up with processes that are more efficient from citizen to city communication. But the map is running through the city administrator, and we will go from there. Commissioner Neering.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, City Attorney, I just want to make sure that my request didn't get nixed based on an opinion, so what I'm asking you to do is go back and provide to me or the commission the process for a commission, I mean, a charter review. It's from my understanding, and our city administrator gave me this opinion, so I wish she was here today to talk for herself, that we could look at it.
Attorney.
City attorney, I'm sorry, sorry, Ms. Johnson, city attorney, gave me this opinion that we could, in fact, look at a section. So there might be some confusion, so I just want to make sure that you heard that request and that you, thank you, appreciate it.
Commissioner Riles.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in, Mayor. I think your mind is already made up, but I wanted to echo the sentiment of my colleagues on the dais. I can tell you firsthand that I have noticed an appreciable difference in the responsiveness to questions that I've had subsequent to your email versus before. And in fact, essentially, the, my constituents have a greater ability to speak with staff than I do, that I'm hamstrung as a commissioner to be able to address their concerns, and they don't understand that, and it puts us in a very bad spot. But I do understand that you've already made up your mind, although I would prayerfully ask that you reconsider and give us the ability to speak with high-level staff and ask questions. I'm certain that they can discern the difference between a question and a demand.
Anything else on this item? Okay.